No potholes. And who is benefiting from that? P and S parking, the contractor? Who is benefiting for $1.6 million that you approve here for that unneeded repaving of that parkway? We need repaving in Palm Coast. We need the two traffic islands which will slow down the traffic in Florida Park Drive. Please do what we need first, and then all these other luxuries. We need also the bathrooms of many years existing Long Creek, where you have kayak and canoe's path, and we have to go to the bathrooms in the woods. Put the bathrooms there.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, City Manager, just for the record, the funding for the waterfront park, could you just describe that for us just quickly?
Yes. A great majority of it was grant-funded by the Florida Inland Navigation District, and it's through a multi-year phasing of funding. So a majority of that funding was contributed through tax dollars provided through the Florida Inland Navigation District.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the presentation section of the meeting today. And remember, this is a budget workshop. So this is sort of, let's call it the summary phase, if you will, of all of the budget detail that we've seen to date. So ladies, if you would proceed.
So good morning, Mayor, City Council, Helena Alves, Financial Services Director, Gwen Redddale, Budget and Procurement Manager, and Raylene Bowman, Budget Coordinator. We're here today to present to you the final proposed budget for fiscal year 2024, and I'll go ahead and turn it in to Raylene.
Ladies, just if you would, just try to move your mics closer in case there are those that are listening, just so it's clearer for them. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, we will be reviewing the timeline, followed by an overview of the general fund, proprietary funds, internal services funds, capital funds, all remaining funds, and TRIM. As you can see from the timeline, we started this process in February. With your annual SAP meetings with staff, outline the priorities that were subsequently adopted on May 2nd. The external auditors presented the annual audit in March, and staff presented the tenure CIP. During the months of April, May, and June, departments presented their showcases, and finance presented the year-to-date budget results, fund accounting and revenue restrictions, as well as property tax overview and TRIM.
Just before you continue, I neglected to say we're going to have an update on the storm as soon as our folks get back from their briefing this morning. So what I'll do is I'll ask you to pause while we let them give us the briefing so they can get back to, you know, their priorities. Okay? So just don't be alarmed. Thank you.
Absolutely.
As you can see, numerous budget presentations and workshops have been held since April in preparation for your first public hearing, which will be held here at City Hall on September 7th at 5:15 PM. City Council will be approving the fiscal year 2023 revised budget, as well as the tentative millage and fiscal year 2024 budget. We will now begin reviewing the general fund revenues and expenditures. This is an overview of the positions budgeted for the general fund. There's a total increase of 13 full-time positions. Five are existing positions being transferred from the facilities fund. Two of these positions are remaining unfunded for fiscal year 2024, leaving eight new positions being requested. There are six new positions requested for the fire department, one for the Southern Recreation Center, and one for the community development. In the following slides, we will outline the positions requested as we review the proposed budgets. This is a big-picture view of the general fund revenues, the overall change of $3.1 million. As shown, the avalorum tax is the largest revenue source for the general fund. As discussed in July, the city's assessed value has increased by 14.4%, with approximately 6% attributable to new construction. Assuming the rollback millage rate of 4.5270, we would generate an additional $1.8 million in avalorum revenues. This portion is attributable to new construction. We have received all state estimates and updated the calculation for today's presentation. The house scent sales tax, which is a portion of the state's 6% sales tax, is projected at $4.1 million. The state revenue sharing is projected at $1.3 million, and the communication service tax is projected at $2.8 million. You will notice the increase in appropriated fund balance for the fiscal year 2023 from the adopted budget of $750,000 to an estimated $2,828,596. The main contributor is the reserve transfer of $2.5 million to the streets improvement fund. This is a big-picture summary of the general fund expenditures, which will be discussed in detail on the following slides. As shown, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 is $55.8 million, an increase of 3.1 million from fiscal year 2023, or 6%. For our general fund budgets, we implemented the measures outlined by Ms. Bevan on the August 8th presentation. The intern program was placed on hold. There were several positions that were unfunded for fiscal year 2024, and there were also reductions in travel and training, as well as reductions to certain operating expenditures. We experienced increases in employee health insurance, regular insurance, and certain operational items, such as chemicals and electricity. I will now turn it over to Gwen to present the individual general fund departments, and she will focus on the main items that contributed to these budget changes.
Thank you. We will start with City Council. The $69.80 increase is mainly due to the lobbying contract for $60,000, moving from the city manager's budget to this budget for fiscal year 2024. The city manager's budget increase of $195,000 was mainly due to the position transfer of the chief of staff from community development. The city clerk's office budget is decreasing by $36,000, mainly due to unfunding the deputy clerk position for fiscal year 24. The city attorney's budget is increasing by $60,000, mainly due to the projected CPI increase to the city attorney's contract. The communications and marketing budget decreased by $49,000, mainly due to unfunding the communications specialist for fiscal year 2024. The human resources budget is decreasing by $29,000, mainly due to unfunding the safety coordinator. The financial services budget is decreasing by $27,000, mainly due to moving the business tax division to the community development division. The fire department budget is increasing by $302,000, mainly by adding new six firefighter positions, and a decrease in fleet allocations in fiscal year 23 that were a one-time catch-up. The Flagler County Sheriff's contract has increased $831,000 due to the contract increase cost increases as presented by the sheriff's office to council at the June 27th workshop. The construction management and engineering budget has increased by $277,000, mainly due to council priority for neighborhood safety study. The parks and recreation budget has increased by $2,859. There were several reductions made to these budgets as outlined in your August 8th presentation. The aquatic center budget has decreased by $9,000. This was accomplished by reducing seasonal staff hours, reducing operational supplies, and the respective reduction in hours of operations. After analyzing attendance data, it was determined that low usage is associated with months of December through January, and we are proposing to close the facilities on those low-usage months. The Southern Recreation Center budget is increasing by $134,000 due to the opening of the new facility. This will also include one new customer service representative. Palm Harbor Golf Club's budget has decreased by $164,000. This was accomplished by reducing seasonal staff hours, removing rental tree trimming equipment, reducing repairs and maintenance allocation, reducing advertising and promotion, and removing the planned parking lot grading improvements from the budget. The parks' maintenance budget has increased by $168,000, mainly due to fleet allocation. The budget also reduced rentals, repairs, and maintenance, as well as a reduction in operating supplies. The streets' maintenance budget has increased by $541,000 due to the transfer of five positions from facilities maintenance. Of the five positions, two will remain unfunded for fiscal year 2024. The planning budget has increased by $259,000 due to a new community development director to be shared with code enforcement and the building fund. The other increases are due to the council priority for the comprehensive plan. The code enforcement budget has increased by $259,000 due to the new community development director, as stated on the previous slide. The budget also includes a reduction in contracted services, specifically as it relates to demolition structural removal, fire hazard mitigation, driveway apron repairs, and wildlife management. Business tax budget has moved from the financial services budget to be included within community development starting in fiscal year 2024. The economic development budget increased by $118,000 due to several council priorities, including the entrepreneurial business retention and expansion program, the business recruitment program, the recaptured enhanced value rev grant, and the business recruitment and expansion program. The non-departmental budget is decreasing by $14,000. We are proposing a contingency for reserve and expenditure fluctuations, as well as value adjustment board adjustments as we have done in the past. The note in the blue needs to be updated to reflect the community redevelopment agency transfer is $1,507. The decrease was due to the maximum millage rate approved at the rollback rate. Do you have any questions on the general fund? Now I will, I'll turn it over, the presentation over to Helena.
Yes. The, walk me through the remaining meetings regarding the budget, because this is where we get to flush out any remaining questions, where they're going to make appointments with City Manager. We're kind of getting close to the end. I mean, we're not at the end yet, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this would be the time to either get together with City Manager if you have questions, suggestions, comments, before we run out of time. Everybody, we're all clear on that, right? Please proceed.
Thank you.
And all of this information is currently available on the city website in the same format that you're showing us this morning.
That is correct.
Thank you.
As well as the detailed worksheets with the backup to these numbers. So we'll go ahead and start it on our proprietary funds. We will start with water and wastewater. So this is an overview of positions. So there's a total of three new positions for the water wastewater fund. We'll go into detail on those positions during the individual slides. This is the position overview and summary for stormwater. As you can see, there's nine new positions proposed for the stormwater enterprise fund, none for building, half a position for the information technology enterprise fund, and none for collections and sanitation. So this is a big-picture summary of the water and wastewater revenues and expenditures. Expenditures are going to be covered in the following slides, so I'm not going to go into detail on this slide. However, the proposed budget is six, just a little over 60 million, an increase of 2.9 million from fiscal year 2023, or 5%. Charges for services makes up the large majority of this budget. Items and other revenue are interest income, miscellaneous revenues, charges associated with turn-on, turn-off fees, lien recording fees, and utility inspections.
I'm going to ask you to take a pause there. This is an important component of the budget. But Chief, are you ready to talk to us?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Of course.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Helena, for giving me a second here.
Good morning.
So obviously, we're currently monitoring Hurricane Idalia in the Gulf of Mexico. Hurricane Idalia is currently a Cat 1 hurricane with sustained winds of 80 miles per hour, and it's expected to make landfall in the bend of Florida sometime early Wednesday as a Cat 3 with sustained winds of up to 120 miles per hour, potentially even a category 4. To that end, yesterday, the mayor signed a declaration of local, declared a state of local emergency, excuse me. And we expect tropical storm-force winds beginning early Wednesday lasting until the late afternoon, early evening on all-day Wednesday. We're not currently anticipating evacuation orders in the city of Palm Coast. However, we are urging our residents and our staff to finalize their storm preparations today. In addition to securing their properties and securing food and water supplies, we also want to make sure that our residents in our pep areas are aware that in the event of a power outage, that they should limit their water usage for as long as possible in order to maintain the safe, their home as a safe area. As we're getting ready for this, I just want to let Mayor and Council know that you just can't imagine the character of the staff of the city of Palm Coast that are, that, what they're willing to do to protect our citizens. It's a tremendously proud moment for me, a privilege to serve with these men and women who are willing to, like, go above and beyond and put themselves in harm's way to make sure that when it rains, the water goes away. We're not expecting this to be a flood event, but that water continues to safely be delivered to our houses and expelled in a way that's appropriate and safe. Our firefighters are there, working with our public works department to make sure that if there's an event of a 911 call, we're going to respond and be able to go there in a clear way, continue to have access to our two local hospitals. And our support staff are doing everything they can to support that mission. It's a tremendously proud moment for me, and it's a privilege to get to serve with them. So for our residents who are looking for more information, we'll continue to update regularly. Our communications department has a robust plan and process in place, and we've already switched our website over to an emergency mode. So if you go to palmcoastgov.com, you can instantly kind of get some, get updates as to what's going on. You can follow us on all of our social pages. We also believe that it's a great idea to keep checking in at flaglercounty.gov and to follow their social media pages as well. We'll continue to push out our best practices and our recommendations for ways to be safe in this event. And your city is getting ready, and we're going to be ready. So do you guys have any questions?
I have none.
Chief, just for the public's benefit, could you please describe when our fire department no longer dispatches, under what weather conditions that is?
Yes, ma'am. So at sustained winds of over 50 miles an hour, which we are anticipating, and we haven't had since Hurricane Irma in this community, it becomes no longer safe to be on the road, so we can sometimes go into a holding pattern for emergency calls. This is something that we do together with our partners in Flagler County Fire Rescue, who operate the transport part of an emergency and EMS response. So it's in association or in, in, got, in aligned with the recommendation of the International Association of Fire Chiefs Hurricane Storm Response.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, sandbags, go.
Oh, yes, sir. We do have a sandbag location at Indian Trails Sports Complex until 3:30 this afternoon. We're also-
That's a new location for us, right? We haven't been there before?
No, sir. We have used this location before, but we're, we're no longer going to be at the Public Works Yard off of US 1. We've seen traffic back up onto US 1, and we, we don't want to repeat that process again as the speeds of that road, we don't like. And Indian Trails has kind of a great drive-through capacity for, for folks, and that's going on right now until 3:30.
So it's open now, and it's, you pick them? You, you fill them? How does that work?
You fill them? Yes, sir.
What?
We fill them, or they?
It's self-service.
Self-service?
Yes, sir.
So what do residents need to bring with them? A shovel? There are? Okay.
There's sand, sandbags, and shovels at the location.
Very good. Thank you.
No questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your service.
When will you, so what is, what is the reporting protocol? In other words, how does City Council stay updated?
Yes, Mayor. So just to give you a context of our chain of command. So Chief Barry Hill and Lauren Johnson, our Assistant City Manager, are incident command staff. So they basically run control of operations in the instance of where we're at today. And it's my responsibility, along with our communications team, to make sure all of City Council is updated by the best means available, either by phone, email, or otherwise, to keep you up to pace on what's happening real time.
All right, thank you. If no one has any additional questions. Chief, thank you. And listen, make sure that you tell every one of your folks, from everyone in front of you here, that we care about their safety first and also our residents' safety. So be safe in whatever you do, please.
Thank you so much. We have not seen a storm like this in quite a while, and so we really want our residents to make sure they've secured everything. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to add something. I did hear on the radio this morning that our, we do have some inmates out at the sandbag locations to help folks carry bags to their cars and things like that. I know during the last storm event, they were very helpful. The sheriff's office was very helpful in that regard, so just another piece of information there.
All right, ladies, that's a tough act to follow, but do your best.
Well, we'll start with the water wastewater administration budget.
Good start.
As you can see, this budget has increased by approximately $203,000, mainly due to a request for a new inventory technician. That's an October 1st starting position, and the transfer from water distribution of utility development manager. Customer service budget has increased by $175,000, mainly due to personnel costs mentioned earlier in the presentation as it relates to health insurance and benefits. Same is true for the utility finance budget. That's increased by $66,000. It's mainly in the personnel services area, as well as for utility, construction, management, and engineering. They do have a decrease in inter-fund transfers. That's for a vehicle that was purchased in 2023 that is not expected to be repeated in 2024. Non-departmental has increased by $1.2 million, mainly due to the increase in R&amp;R utility capital transfer of approximately $400,000, as well as $560,000 for the initial loan payment related to wastewater treatment plant number two construction. That is expected for the loan to come online in February of 2024. Wastewater pumping budget decreased by $39,000 due to reducing the fleet replacement allocation, and there were no new equipment requests for fiscal year 2024. Wastewater collection is decreasing by $544,000 due mainly to VATCON equipment approved for fiscal year 2023. That, of course, is not recurring into 2024. This budget also includes a request for an assistance utility manager to be split with water distribution. Wastewater treatment plant number one budget has increased by $404,000, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures, chemicals, fuel. They're also requesting $31,000 in new equipment, not associated with fleet for fiscal year 2024. Wastewater treatment plant number two budget has increased by $259,000, again, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures, chemicals, fuel, electricity. Water treatment plant number one budget has increased by $778,000, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures. This budget also includes elevated tank rehabilitation, which is a one-time expenditure of $280,000. Water treatment plant number two budget has increased by $604,000, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures, chemicals, fuels, electricity. The budget also includes a request for a utility-certified control systems technician with a start date of April 1st. Water treatment plant number three has increased by $232,000, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures, chemicals, and fuel. Water quality budget has increased by $35,000, mainly due to increases in operating expenditures for contracted services, for lab testing compliance, and operational testing, as well as other supplies. Water distribution budget has decreased by $595,000, mainly due to decreasing the number of water meter installs. This budget also included half an FTE for the assistance utility manager, split with water collections, and transferring the utility development manager to administration. Before I move forward to capital projects, do you have any questions specific to water wastewater operations?
I just want to take a half a moment, just really a shout-out to Kevin Guthrie, who is our Executive Director of Florida Department of Emergency Management. You may know Kevin. He was our emergency manager here some years ago, and currently, he is tied to the hip with our governor. But he has helped us in many different ways as we're talking about water, and I think helped us make our ability to endure this storm and future storms better. So I just think it's appropriate that as a community, we all thank him for his special focus on the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County.
Thank you. So this is a summary of the utility capital projects fund. As you can see, the proposed revenue and expenditures for fiscal year 2024 are approximately $70 million. Director Steve Flanagan addressed these with you at your July 25th presentation. We don't have any significant changes. The budget includes a number of grants, mainly related to American Rescue Plan Act funds, which include a combination of county funds and city funds, totaling approximately $8 million. This budget also includes approximately $9 million for the state revolving fund loan proceeds for the completion of wastewater treatment plant number two. This is a summary of water capital projects, as discussed in July. Staff has made updates to project budgets, but no significant changes. Now Steve Flanagan is available if Council has specific questions regarding any of these projects.
Anybody, if you, if you don't have a question now, obviously, through City Manager, you can contact Steve if there are specific questions as we move forward to next week. Question?
I did have one question. It says Flagler County ARPA Hammock Community Center.
I'm just curious as to why this is specifically listed on our worksheet.
Not sure if Steve wants to come up or not, but we do have two county ARPA-funded projects that are running through the system as they are utility projects. But maybe Mr. Flanagan can provide additional detail.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, community. Thank you for the question. We have actually several things going on with the county right now. We have our two ARPA-funded projects. One is for wastewater extension on the beach side of our force main system for wastewater from basically a starting point of A1A and Jungle Hut Road up to Malacampera Road and then down Malacampera to the community center that's listed. So that's why you see community center in there and/or the park. Actually, it's going down to the park as well. So that project is nearing design and permitting completion. We also have, if I can have another minute to explain the other projects with the county. We have what is the Willow Woods Water Main, which is also a county ARPA-funded project. That project actually has completed design and permitting. It just went out for bid and we received bids. And the good news is we're under, it appears we're under budget. So it shouldn't be any problems actually getting that one approved through both city and county approval processes. So that's an exciting project to move forward for some folks that are on the beach side that really have some serious water issues.
Well, Steve, let's take it up a notch. And Councilwoman, you're probably already aware of this, but in terms of our city's focus on economic development. So the extension of utilities should provide for the introduction of new commercial businesses and entities that were not previously available because they lack utilities. So I think that that was part of the initial concept here to be able to get more of those businesses up and running in the future. So it should be, even though they're not in the city, I think they'll have an impact across city lines for us.
So just to be clear, thank you, Mayor, for that. The utility, this $8 million or 8.9, this is because we are providing the utilities for that area in the hammock?
I'm not sure the 8.9 you're tying to?
I'm sorry.
8.9?
2.9, 2.9. I was looking at the wrong line and I had them. Yeah, the 2.9.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
As the mayor well said, a lot of actually businesses that are along that route on A1A from Jungle Hut to Malacampera are already beating our doors down. When is it going to be there? When is it going to be active where I can connect into it? So the economic growth is there and coming for a lot of those businesses, especially along A1A and that route. On September 5th, I will be back in front of you for a federal grant through the county to actually extend that same force main system from Malacampera, potentially all the way up to Marineland for other potential economic benefits. And for me, a lot is not just economic benefits. There's a lot of environmental benefits that are really going to be with this. Ultimately, years, as years go by, and we get some of those septic tanks off the beach side.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, please.
Thank you. Find where I was at. So this is a summary of water capital projects that are not included in the budget for fiscal year 2024 that are going to be included in the utility rate study. I don't think there's any changes. No, there's no changes to these from your July presentation. And same as previously, Mr. Flanagan can answer any questions that you may have. I think the rate study is scheduled to be presented to council towards the end of the calendar year.
I'm sorry, the rate study begins, what is the start date?
It is ongoing. I believe it's...
Ongoing. What's the next?
I believe it's coming to council towards the end of the calendar year.
And that would be a first blush of what their recommendations are?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, that is correct. So this is the summary of the wastewater capital projects as discussed in July. Again, no significant changes. Projects, budgets, updates were done by staff. Once again, Steve Flanagan can provide details. On your September 5th business meeting, you'll see an item for wastewater treatment plant number one expansion rehab design study. The project came in over budget for fiscal year 2024. And he will, Mr. Flanagan will cover where the project is being funded from at that point. And this is the summary of wastewater capital projects that are not included in the budget. Same as the water projects, these are going to be included in your utility rate study. And again, there's no changes to this list from your July presentation. Before I move forward, any more questions on water wastewater capital projects?
No, not at this time. You know, these projects have not been included in the current budget because they don't belong in that current budget. But when we talk about the fact that our budget is an ongoing process, this is an example of that. So these are numbers and expenses and capital improvements that we are going to have to deal with, although they're not part of the document that's in front of us today, if you will.
That is correct.
Certainly are no less important or concerning. They do represent the future of the city in terms of, you know, water and all of its various uses within the city. So we're just, you know, it's really important, but it's, I'm trying to find a way to make the public understand that it is part of the process, but not part of what we're actually approving at this time.
That is correct. They will not be in the numbers that you will approve on September 7th for your tentative budget. But still needed project. So we'll move forward to stormwater management fund revenues and expenditures. The expenditures are going to be covered in the following slides. The proposed budget is 32.5 million, an increase of 3.9 million from fiscal year 2023, or 14%. The increase in revenues of 4 million in charges for services is a direct effect of the rates approved by council earlier this year. The additional revenue will be allocated according to the rate study as approved. There's also 1.3 million projected loan for equipment to serve operations, starting in January, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act funding transfer of 6.1 million for the London Waterway Project. Stormwater engineering budget has decreased by 2.6 million due to transferring personnel to operations, as well as their operating expenditures, as well as a decrease in capital request from fiscal year 2024. Stormwater management operations has an increase of 865,000. They are requesting two new positions, a citizens resource and outreach coordinator and a stormwater specialist, as well as transferring seven full-time employees from stormwater engineering. The maintenance budget has increased by 4 million due to the request for seven new positions that would start June 1st. Also, 2.3 million in new equipment as outlined in the rate study. The stormwater non-departmental budget has increased by approximately 1.7 million. Major contributor is the transfer of 2.5 million to the capital projects fund for the stormwater portion of the maintenance operation complex. This is a summary of the stormwater five-year revenues. Carl Cody reviewed these with you on July 25th. There have been no significant changes to the revenues. And this is the summary of the stormwater five-year capital expenditures. Again, no significant changes. Carl is available to provide any project details or answer any questions from council.
We have no detailed questions at this time.
The building fund budget has increased by 95,000 due to personnel expenses that were covered at beginning of the presentation. The budget does not include any new fleet items for fiscal year 24 as they did in fiscal year 2023. Information Technology Enterprise Fund has decreased by 70,000, mainly due to decrease in capital outlay for fiscal year 2024. This budget does include half an FTE that is shared with the IT Operations Internal Service Fund for an infrastructure administrator. Collections and sanitation fund budget has an increase of 1.9 million to accommodate the current contract for solid waste residential services. Before we move to internal service funds, any questions on proprietaries?
Just, can we get a quick comment on the building permit fund? You've made some progress there. Can you just kind of, I'd like to go on the record with that.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff. Our stakeholder meeting is later this week. I think it's on Thursday or Friday, depending on the weather. So, and we haven't announced, you know, we haven't had that conversation with them and that discussion with them. So I'll preface with this, but as you know, the building fund is a regulated fund by Florida statute. And we are to not exceed a certain amount based on a four-year rolling average of operating. We're well under that right now. We have been at a 50% reduction for a little over a year, I believe. And we are expecting to make some changes to that in, for November 1. And our initial step, and again, I preface, we're still working with our stakeholders on this. But our initial step would be to update the ICC valuation table. That is part of our fee resolution, and that changes based on regional costs of construction. And that will generate additional revenue. Right now, we, our fund balance transfer for the year is a little over 700,000. That means that from our fund balance, we under-collected and we transferred that to make up our revenue shortfall. The change in the ICC value table, we estimate, will recover about 4 to 500,000 of that. And then we'll evaluate that and then decide if we need to make additional changes to the fee itself, increasing the, or decreasing the reduction to better balance our revenues and our expenses.
So that's a big mouthful of a lot of acronyms and letters and everything else. So the concept is that the building fund, according to the state, should pay for itself. But you have to sit the floor and ceiling limits because no two municipalities are the same. So you stay within there, and the work that you and staff have done meticulously over these past many months is to refine the process and make sure that we are using the building fund permit fees efficiently and effectively to pay for that service.
Yes, sir. And I'll just remind the public that there's no tax dollars in the building fund. That is self-funded through permit fees. And yes, we try to balance them as best we can. Because of fluctuations in construction, that sometimes makes it difficult. As you can imagine, like a big project, like the hospital coming in that pays, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in a permit fee, that makes a big difference in how your, you know, your budget.
And just from the public's point of view, you may have to budget a person for, to do the administration of this, but that person may never be hired because you can't find a person.
That is true.
However, that number is stuck in the budget until the following fiscal period.
Yes, and thank you for that as well. Yes, we have open positions that we have not been able to fund this. Unfortunately, this is, these are positions that are state licensed. They're very difficult to, you have to have a lot of experience to be able to get the license. And you know, we have a robust internship program, but you still have to start with a basis of four years, a minimum of four years of experience. And for plans examiners, it's even more difficult, and that's what we're short right now. So what we do is we have a continuing service contract with a private provider to perform plan review for us. We're using that provider right now. When we are fully staffed, we don't use that provider, so we budget for both, right? We budget for the staff. We'd much rather have the staff because then we can provide more consistent review, how we want it reviewed, rather than having an outside provider do that review. So we would prefer to have the staff. However, we also have to make sure we are maintaining our level of service that is demanded by this community and which we do every day. So we have that private provider to supplement us when we don't have the staff in place.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. DiLorenzo?
I do have a question. Will we, after the stakeholder meetings, will we see a presentation at another workshop on what you all have found, comparing us to other cities comparable to us, so that we can kind of see if we're in the right ballpark or how we should move on this?
As the mayor mentioned, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, it's really community to community. So, but from a performance measure, we do have some data. We had our, one of the city administration's interns work on that project. What we, yes, if you would like to, we can bring some of that forward. What we found is that we, the city of Palm Coast, does a good job of promoting our KPIs and our performance, our performance measures. And other, not all other cities and agencies, building agencies, do that. So they weren't able to produce the data that we're able to produce. So it made it very difficult for the intern to understand where we are compared to others. And I'll give you an example. I don't remember the city, but in his presentation to us, he said there were, there were several building departments that said, you know, a building permit takes four to six weeks, right? Well, I don't know how you compare four to six weeks, right? That's kind of difficult. That's not very scientific. So that is some, some one he ran into, but we do have a significant amount of data that, that he did review from other agencies. And if you'd like, we can put that in a presentation, or we could give it to you individually.
To the councilwoman's point, again, that's another underpinning of economic development. If, I think your question is right on. If we can promote that and market that, it just makes us that much more desirable for folks to take a look at. This might be the right place to talk about a project.
Yes, definitely. I guess what I'm concerned about is that the stakeholder meetings occur, and then all of a sudden, we have a different fee structure that hasn't been made public as far as the reasoning behind it, why staff has decided to go in one direction or the other. So I guess from my perspective and for the public's perspective, to put that information out to our residents so that they know we are monitoring these things. We are making sure that we're, we're, I don't want to say competitive, but that we are collecting the proper monies for the work that our staff does.
Right. You know, right now, our revenues are below our expenses. And so we know we need to make a change because we've, you'll remember that we reduced the fees to reduce that fund balance because we were collecting more, more than we needed, right? So we made that change. But we also made it more than we needed so we could reduce the fund balance itself. The fund balance is now below $2 million and well within the range that is provided by the state. And so we're looking to just match that up. And yes, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we have a public outreach on that. And one other thing about, you mentioned, you know, the presentation about, you know, bringing our performance measures back forward. The, at some point in time in the next couple of months, we're going to bring, bring you a presentation on the new economic development website. And our performance measures are going to be part of that website. So maybe that's the appropriate place to bring that forward for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ladies?
So we will move forward to our internal services funds. The city has four of these. Basically, this is how we budget for departments that provide day-to-day services and support to other city departments. We will review these individually. I will turn it back over to Raylene.
This is a summary of the requested new positions. We will go into more detail on the individual slides. The fleet management fund budget has decreased by 1.9 million, primarily due to the decrease in requests for white fleet and equipment for fiscal year 2024. This budget also includes the transfer of one FTE from facilities. This is a list of the requests for new white fleet and equipment for fiscal year 2024. Director Matt Mansell has an item on the agenda for today for the respective resolution to approve the fiscal year 2024 fleet program. The resolution agenda summary and backup have the details for each item being purchased. As you can see, we are also carrying three fleet assets from fiscal year 2022 and 34 assets from fiscal year 2023 that have not been received as of today. The facilities management budget or fund has decreased by 556,000, mainly due to four FTEs being transferred to other departments. The information technology internal services fund is increasing by 399,000, mainly due to adding one FTE for a new project manager and half an FTE for an infrastructure administrator, as well as additional costs for software and repairs and maintenance. The emergency communication fund budget increased by $138,000. This is due to an increase in the rental fee charged by the county.
May I stop you? I'm sorry. What rental fee?
So our emergency communications fund, we have an interlocal agreement with Flagler County. They manage the structure of the communication system. And the city pays a subscriber fee based on radio issued to the city.
Do we know how much their fees went up total?
So I can, probably Doug Akins is a better person to answer this question. The county went out and renegotiated their contract, I believe, last year. And with this new contract, it includes not only the maintenance and subscription, as well as the future replacement of the system. And I believe our current fee is $80,000. And I believe our current fee is $875.
I believe so. I don't know the exact number, but it was a 700, about $700 jump per unit is the increase this year.
Is that a lot? It seems like a lot.
It was a substantial increase from last year, yes, but.
Do we know the reasoning behind that?
Well, as Helena mentioned, it was, they're including now upgrades to the system, but before we were budgeting every year for that. So that, and they said they were under budgeted on their personnel cost, so they had to increase that cost. And that's not just for the city, that's every unit that uses these radios. So police, fire, across the county uses these, it's all that increase.
So I'm assuming that this is a percentage of the county's overall increase, what we're paying, right?
That is correct.
So my question is, what, do we know that percentage? Do we know how much their full increase was and then what percentage of that we're paying?
Yes, we do.
Because we already paid 44 cents per dollar of our, our homeowner's taxes go to the county. We're paying an extra 800 and something thousand dollars to the sheriff's contract. So these things are, these dollars and cents start to add up. So my concern is what those total numbers are so that we can keep track of how much of that we're paying as well.
Yes, absolutely. We do have the worksheet from, that we received from the county. We went with them and their whole team regarding this increase. So we'll go ahead and provide you that worksheet.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Hey Doug, I'm sorry, before you go. So is the system good, bad, or indifferent?
The radio system?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. It's been solid for.
Only because we don't use it, so I don't have any way to know.
We did have. I know there was, at the time we upgraded, the old system was, was on this last leg.
Well, I mean, that's so from the past, I, I heard some not so positive comments. So I'm just asking you that you're satisfied with it and it's especially today.
I've heard no complaints about it, yes.
Okay, good.
And just, just for the record, that was the 800 megahertz upgrade that we went through many years ago and it was a big one-time cost. And I assume that this money is to try to prevent that from occurring again.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I will now turn over to Gwen to review capital funds.
This is a summary of the capital projects fund revenues. There has been a change since your August 8th presentation as it relates to the transfer from the general fund. The capital projects budget fund for fiscal year 2024 is $20 million. This includes 13 million for the maintenance operations complex, which was reduced since your presentation on August 8th. It also includes 3 million for Holland Park and 2 million for information technology capital upgrades. The streets improvement fund for fiscal year 2024 is 7.6 million. This includes 6.5 million for street rehabilitation and renewal. This includes the 2.5 million transfer from the general fund as directed by council. The transportation impact fee fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is 26 million. This includes 13.2 million for Metansus Woods Parkway, 5.3 million for Whiteview safety improvements, 2.1 million for Old Kings Road widening, and 1.7 million for Bel Air safety improvements. These are all tied to grants. There is also 3 million for Citation Boulevard improvements. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. The town center transportation impact fee fund for fiscal year 2024 is 800,000 for the Royal Palms Parkway. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. The recreation impact fee fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is 6.9 million. This includes 4.3 million for the Southern Recreation Facility. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. The fire impact fee fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is 7.7 million. This includes 4 million for Fire Station 26 and 3.6 million for Fire Station 22 replacement. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. The American Rescue Plan Act fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is 12.1 million. This includes 6 million for the London Waterway Expansion, 3 million for Fire Station 22, and 3 million for water, wastewater centrifuge replacement. These funds need to be obligated by December 31st, 2024 and expended by December 31st, 2026. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. The State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency Fund budget for 2024 is 2.9 million. 900,000 will be to debt service and 1.3 million will be transferred to other funds as noted on the slide. There have been no significant changes since your August 8th presentation.
I'm sorry, the, the boundary for the state road, the geographical boundary for the State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency Fund ends on which side of 100?
That's probably a great question for Jason De Lorenzo.
Okay.
North side, sir.
On the north side. Okay, so that answers my other question.
I'll, I'll send city council a boundary map.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is 1.6 million. This includes 750,000 for a road study funded by grants and 500,000 for design. There have been no changes since your August 8th presentation. So any questions on?
Yeah, I, I need you to help me understand. You, you, you went a quick line item on James F. Holland Park. There was significant amount of money to be used for. I'm not quite clear on what that used for means.
You're talking about the capital projects fund?
Yeah. So 3 million bucks, give or take?
Yes. Carl Cody can come and speak to the project itself, but that is related to the splash pad, I believe.
Yeah, in that fund, we, we programmed, you know, back when Trevor Arnold, our attorney for the city presented to council of some options, we had gone up to bid and got a bid to do the refurbishment of the splash pad. So those dollars would cover that cost as well as some contingency in there associated with that project. So that's if the city council elected to advance moving forward with the splash pad reconstruction refurbishment prior to the litigation. The litigation dates, you know, seem to keep dragging out. So we just put dollars in there. So if council's direction was, let's move forward now, we'll have some hard costs to go after and seek reimbursement on, that, that was one of the options that the attorney presented.
So it's a placeholder. So I guess my real.
A placeholder if council chooses to.
Right. So my real question is, so those dollars are getting close to a year old already or that forecast? 3 million dollars is, is getting old.
Correct.
So there's probably, you know, not knowing anything, could be another year before those dollars might be used or discussed even. I'm just concerned with the rapid changes in cost estimates. That number could significantly change in a 24-month period, especially with a specialty project like this.
Right. Those dollars now, the current bid that came in, the bidder has agreed with the city to extend and hold this price for an additional 90 days. So coming this fall, his price will, won't be valid anymore. But those dollars are in the budget. We can always reallocate those to, you know, the MOC or something else if council said, hey, look, you know, we don't, we don't want to advance the project. We can push those projects, you know.
So it really is a kind of a faceless placeholder at this point. I mean, I know you had to throw some money in there, but it's like, it's not realistic, right?
Well, no, that is real. That is real dollars. We can go fix the splash pad for that money and get it up and running again.
A year ago.
No. Right now, today.
So I'm sorry, so they're holding that bid in place for another 90 days?
Yes.
So 91 days from now?
We'd have to rebid the project and get new, new pricing.
And based on the cost that we've seen dramatically increasing, I'm just, I'm just getting everybody ready. I mean, there could be a dramatic jump in that number, right?
It could be. One, due to that, due to the fact that it's a litigation project, it's a reconstruction project, you know, that, that we had trouble even entertaining bidders on it.
Right.
We reached out to the different associations for pools. We reached out to contractors through the vendors, through our designers. We, we tried extremely hard to get bidders and we only ended up with one bidder, actually two bidders teamed up together.
And I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just, it's a flashing sign that, you know, that, that number needs to be looked at very carefully when we get around to it again.
Right. It may, it may go up the longer we wait or we may get no bidders and then, and then, you know, that's going to be even more difficult.
All right. Thank you for that.
Carl, based on if, if we approve the budget as is with this 3 million in there, what is the timeline that you all have protracted for the splash pad to be usable again by our residents?
Right now, the contract term is 270 days and the, due to, they, the time was extended during the bidding period. So when we were out to bid, the vendors and we met with the, the contractor and the subcontractor after the bid and had some discussions with them. The, the reason for the long timeframe was due to the, I guess, the additional assurance and quality control that's been implemented to make sure that this reconstruction is done properly. There's three sets of surveys that are going to be done with each concrete pour, each concrete pour is small, you know, the slopes, the size, you know, all, there's a, there's a lot of intricate pieces tied to, you know, reconstructing the splash pad and making sure it's done right. So we got a full-time person on site from the engineering firm. We're going to have three, three checks on the survey before they pour. So that, all that takes time. So that, that's was the worst-case scenario that they saw needing that much time to work in a slow-moving process. So.
And I guess city manager.
270 days, if we want it open at all for next summer, we're going to have to give them the go-ahead soon.
Okay. So city manager, do you have a, a policy or procedure in place so that we don't get to this 90 days and then, you know, all of a sudden be forced into a corner to make some kind of a decision? I mean, so 90 days we have left, right?
I, I, I don't remember the exact date.
Because I don't see it coming up as an agenda item is why I'm asking.
Yeah. It's sometime November, December timeframe is when it runs out. I can get, I think it's like December 7th, but I could double check.
But does it become, does, does the question come before city council during that timeframe?
Well, a couple milestones that's going to come to city council is our Planning Our Parks Initiative. So if you recall, some of the results of that spoke to water-based sports and resources. But to Carl's point, I mean, if today you're, you're approving a budget for 3 million dollars, not today per se, but this is a workshop, we're, if this is an opportunity to get direction from city council, we would be grateful for that.
For today?
If, if that's at city council's pleasure.
If you are directing staff to bring this back as soon as we can with the budget to advance getting it completed for next summer, then we can get it on a upcoming meeting.
If we decide.
If you decide.
Right. That hasn't been decided yet.
No, no, no. So let, so I, I can only speak for myself. I, I'm not prepared to offer a single council person's direction right now. However, I do think it behooves each one of us to dig in now before we get to that 90 days so that we could offer direction, whatever the direction is. I don't know what it is.
Well, we don't know where we're headed with this thing, unfortunately.
No, but we also don't want to be on day 91 and say, oh, I wish I could have, should have, would have.
I think we have to go through a whole court thing, don't we?
Well, if I can, because this is somewhat my wheelhouse. But I think the strategy behind moving forward to get this open and attaching it with hard costs is advisable from the, the standpoint of the litigation. I understand that it's money that we have to put forward, but in order to actually have a, an, a damages number and know what it is actually costing the city to fix this in the litigation process is probably the, the wiser thing to do. Additionally, our residents have been asking for this for a long time. And I, I think that with the taxpayers already putting out money, you know, or, or impact fees already being used once, let's get this open for our, our residents. We need more activities for our kids in the city and this will allow our attorney to actually assess the damages. So I mean, my, my position on this is that we keep it in here and obviously we leave it to staff to ensure there's proper checks and balances with regards to the contract and the workers and things like that.
And I would encourage each city council member to make a appointment with city staff to whatever questions you might have or whatever we can put together so that we're as, as well-informed as we can be. So when it gets up here for conversation, we're ready to go.
I'm, I'm absolutely in agreement with Councilwoman Pontiari. I couldn't, oh, sorry, I couldn't have said that better myself. So I would express that my position is absolutely the same is that these funds, and we don't know whether or not we would even get another bidder in the future, I think that tying these funds to a concrete number like that, no pun intended, is the right thing to do. So that's my position. So I know we have at least two positions formed here.
I'm also very much in agreement with Councilwoman Pontiari. And I think that it's really important to get that splash pad open up for the children in the community so that they can get back to having fun there.
Okay. So Carl, the direction today is obviously to, as Councilwoman Pontiari suggested, we'll leave that money in there, understanding that that may not be the right number because, because we don't know any better than that now. And then I for one will reach out to our city attorney, as I would ask each of you to do as well, to find out, is that the best advice that we, is it to our advantage to move this project forward despite the litigation? I guess I'm just still not, from a legal standpoint, I'm, I'm not sure I understand how that works exactly just because I, because I don't know.
The other question I had too, this 3 million dollars, does that account for a contingency like we usually do or is that 3 million just the base and then there's a contingency on top?
No, that, that I believe included a contingency and it included some of the, this, the construction administration by the engineering firm to be on site as well.
Thank you.
All right. So that's coming back for us to discuss. Okay.
And we can have our, like you indicated, we could have our attorney give you an update on where we are.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate that.
What's been done, have a timeline, go through the pros and cons again of if we proceed or not proceed, you know, in this avenue of the two options, I guess like you did last time, just to revisit that.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carl. So all other remaining funds, the Community Development Block Grant Fund accounts for several programs, including housing rehab assistance to the community. The change for fiscal year 2024 is 3.8%. Community Development has presented to council in great detail the items that are included in the CDBG plan at the August 8th presentation. So this is the budget to support that annual plan as approved by council. The Police Education Fund is used for specialized deputy training. These funds are collected from fines within the city through the Flagler County Clerk of Court, are then submitted to the city of Palm Coast, and we submit it to the sheriff's office. There's no changes expected from fiscal year 2023. Sorry. The Disaster Reserve Fund is used to account for any federal assistance usually associated with hurricanes. We don't budget for disasters, so you will not see a budget for fiscal year 2024. Council has established a reserve to mitigate the potential cash flow issue that would be created between the occurrence and the actual reimbursement from FEMA. We analyze the budget in the Disaster Reserve Fund as outlined in your July budget presentations and are proposing the transfer of a million dollars. The Special Events Fund is funded by the recycling revenue from our solid waste contract. Staff has identified event programs that will remain in the fund and have identified those events and programs that can be moved to other budgeted areas. Some of the current events planned are the Holiday Parade, Arbor Day, July 4th fireworks, and tree lighting ceremony. Usage of this fund helped continue to provide quality events and programs for the residents of Palm Coast. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, this is balance left in that, from that neighbors, Neighborhood Stabilization Grant. The Community Development Staff is currently working with the state agencies to transfer those funds left to the CDBG program. The Health Insurance Fund, this is where we account for costs related to our employees' health benefits, includes claims, admin fees, stop-loss insurance, wellness program, and other related expenses. Council received a detailed presentation on the Health Insurance Fund on June 13th, and this is the budget to support the benefits outlined in June. Big picture of all fund expenditures, you can see that total, total of all funds is approximately 357.7 million. This represents an increase of 9% from your fiscal year 2023 adopted budget. Water and wastewater utility account for 130 million or 36% of that budget. Capital projects, streets improvement and impact fee funds account for approximately 69 million or 19%. The general fund accounts for approximately 56 million or 16%. Stormwater accounts for 32, 32 million or 9%. And the budget and the balance of all other funds make up the remaining. And the budget and the balance of all other funds make up the remaining 20% of the total budget. Any questions before we move forward to the tram process?
Councilman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilman, Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, please proceed.
So we'll go off the truth and mileage. The graph shows the history of the city's population growth and ad valorem tax revenue collected from 2012 to 2024. As you can see, we continue to experience growth in the city. This chart has the history of the last several years for mileage rate, property values, receipts collected, and population. The city has been experiencing an increase in property values as well as population growth. The fiscal year 2024 values are based on the property appraisers' July 1 valuation. And it's assuming the rollback rate, mileage rate of 4.2570. This is a look of how a dollar is split between the taxing authorities. For every dollar in ad valorem taxed is paid. Flagler County receives 44 cents, School Board 29 cents, the City of Palm Coast receives 24 cents, and the other taxing districts share the other 3 cents. This is based on the fiscal year 2023 adopted mileage rates for all of those taxing authorities. It's important to note that the percentage allocated to the city is approximately 24%. This is a look at the mileage options. The rollback rate is 4.257. The fiscal year 2023 adopted rate were 4.61. The adopted maximum mileage rate is 4.2570 for fiscal year 2024. And the proposed rate for fiscal year 24 is 4.2570. Do we have any questions on the mileage rate?
Just a comment, and it's, I'm really not looking for a conversation, I guess. But that 24% versus 44%, I just struggle with that. Because of the dramatic change in the skewing of the, of the population. And more importantly, I don't see that trend changing in the foreseeable future. So I don't really know how to address that. It's not something that we can compare to other communities cause you, you lose the apples and the oranges right away. It's just, I don't know, it's, it's something I'm gonna continue to, to kinda focus on.
No, I'm with you on that, Mayor, 100%. And it is a concern of mine because we've annexed in a little bit more land. There's been development on that land. But we continue to pay the county quite a large chunk of our residents' money. I, I mean, I almost would like to see totally robustly how much we're paying for either inter-local agreements, piggybacking contracts, whatever it is, any monies that are going to the county, what services we're getting in return for that. And then how much of that contributes to the county's whole budget so that we can make sure essentially that our residents are still paying a fair share. And as we, as we grow and as we consume more development, that we're not really being short-changed here in any way.
And, and the underlying theme is that everybody, each municipality, including the county, has to be, you know, revenue neutral has to stand on their own, has to, you know, nobody, nobody here can be in the business with our taxpayers' money of, you know, helping the other, the other side. I know that we look at ourselves as a county and, and all of that, but we still have to stand alone.
We do, and I, and I think, you know, we've been working really symbiotically, I think, with the county and our partners over there, so I don't want there to be a negative connotation attached to that. But, you know, at the end of the day, we represent 96,000 residents in Palm Coast. So we need to make sure that we're being fair to them.
So next steps, to adopt the tentative fiscal year 2024 budget, the tentative mileage and the revised fiscal year 23 budget at your first public hearing, which will be held on Thursday, September 7th at 5:15 here at City Hall. And then your final public hearing is on Wednesday, September 20th, also at 5:15 here at City Hall to adopt the final fiscal year 2024 budget and mileage rates. We would like to remind the public where they can find all of our great budget information. As in previous years, we have set up the fiscal year 2024 budget preparation link on the city's website. This is where you will find all of our presentations, our budget calendar, and supporting documentation for all of these numbers.
And after reviewing your great budget information, if a resident should have a question specific to the budget, who should they address that question to? Presumably by email, I would think.
So we have a link on the website that directs customers to customer service and then they disperse the calls out.
So they can interact right through the website, ask their question, and look for a response that way?
That is correct. Our contact information is on the website, absolutely.
Well, that was certainly a mouthful this morning, so I appreciate, I can't even count the number of hours. And you must have caluses on your fingertips from all of the digitizing of, of that arithmetic. So I know that everyone up here appreciates staff's effort with all of that. And I think you all have fielded, you know, our questions robustly. And I certainly, for one, have learned through the processes. I hope I would learn more every year. So any final comments regarding today?
I would just like to say thank you, ladies, for that presentation. And I too know that you have spent tremendous amount of hours preparing, I could just looking at it. So I'd like to thank you for all your hard work and your presentation. Thank you.
Of course, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
One final comment, so thank you to the staff who presented, but also to our staff who contributed to the overall budget and how we're using taxpayer dollars. I think we've seen a lot of money spent on infrastructure, specifically right now. If you look at the stormwater increases, the IT increases, really infrastructure, everything from technology to roads to stormwater, things that are necessities. So I think as we're looking at the overall budget and really crunching numbers, making sure that our residents are safe and that we are building a strong foundation for the future. So I appreciate the work that all of our department heads and our city manager has done in that regard as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda this morning, the clerk, I, I don't believe that, since it's a workshop, we're not gonna read the resolution into the record. This is just a presentation. So Mr. Mansell, you'll bring us up to date on that, if you would.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Matthew Mansell here, your Public Works Director. And I have with me today our illustrious Public Works Fleet Manager, Mr. Roger LeChance. So if you have any specific questions about today's agenda items, we will be happy to answer those for you. We do not have a presentation, however, we do want to provide a overview of the resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 Fleet Replacement and Purchase Program. So we have in front of you today in your packets the summary of our process of reviewing all of the vehicles that were aged out and due for inspection for replacement. And this fiscal year, we had 224 vehicles that we did a detailed inspection on. And we are recommending replacing 39 of those vehicles, as well as purchasing two fire items as new items and the purchase of 21 new assets as outlined in the exhibits below. I'm sorry, two fire items as replacement items, not as new items. So each year, staff works with vendors to maximize the cost savings from locking in year-end pricing. We also work to promptly issue purchase orders for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, which may experience a longer lead time for delivery due to high demand. And to properly execute this process at the best value to our citizens, we propose several purchasing methods, including piggybacking existing state and national contracts, sole source agreements, and the collection of competitive bids. So in your packets, you will see a detailed outline under Exhibit A that details each vehicle or piece of equipment that we propose replacing or purchasing, as well as the proposed purchasing and procurement method that we intend to use. So pending any of your questions, that's what we have for you today.
Thank you for the hard work. I know you guys do a ton over there and everything is, you know, you guys are maximizing every dollar that you can. Thank you for your hard work.
Councilwoman Hyder, any question about specifically, Councilwoman Pontieri?
No questions.
I just have a question with regards to ordering versus when we receive units. Are, when we, when we actually purchase a unit or enter into a contract for a unit, are we locked in at that price? Or are we seeing them raise the prices on us because we can't get units for a certain amount of time? Cause I know vehicles are hard to get right now, specifically pickup trucks. So is that an issue right now as far as budgeting?
As far as 23 went, everybody kinda stuck to their prices. It worked out pretty good. There were a couple of increases. The dump trucks that we're just getting now, chassis prices stayed the same, but the body manufacturer went up. So yes, the both things. For the most part, they were able to hold their prices. In, in some cases, there were increases.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that as we're budgeting, obviously, we're keeping an eye on that aspect of things. And then if there's any type of priority where if we know that certain things are available and others are not, just for budgeting purposes, maybe shifting around those priorities. But it sounds like that hasn't become too much of an issue at this point.
Not yet.
Perfect, thank you.
I do have a quick question. The vehicles that you are getting rid of, that are being taken out of the fleet, what happens to them?
Yep, we, we just finished our final auction for the fiscal year 23. And happy to say that we met the goal, the goal was 850. We finished up at $876,000, just short of 877.
So they're auctioned off, you said?
Auctioned off, yep.
So we're currently using a web service called GovDeals, I do believe. And so they're listed for a certain number of days, open to the public. And they, they manage all of the advertising and backend part of that for us. And then we receive the funds once the items are, are auctioned off.
And I wanna commend your staff for the work that you do because I know that we're able to get those monies largely because of the maintenance and upkeep that our Public Works does. So thank you to your men and to, to your work for that.
Good, I think that's, we, we have no additional questions. Thank you, Matt, and thank you.
Council.
Appreciate that. So with that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which would be final public participation today. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on items that were not previously discussed in today's workshop? Seeing no one come forward at this time, I'll, yep, please, okay. Yes. Yes. Not the same subject, but. No, no, of course not. Yeah, go ahead. Hold up, yeah, there we go.
My name is Sylvia Bugulisi, resident since 1991. I do want to, yes, it was a clear budget, but I want, please, this council, oh, first of all, thank you to Mrs. Pontieri and the mayor because I totally agree that we, the residents of Palm Coast, since we incorporated, have, we've been gouged by the county that we pay in our ad valorem. 44, 24, which is our take, what we pay to the county, to me, is too much for the services we receive from the county. The city has to pay all our roads, see? It is a lot of mileage of roads. And how many citizens, residents we have in the city paying this tax? And how many residents collaborate in the county? I have nothing against the county. I have friends that live in the county. And I am sorry that the county does not provide yet with reliable internet, which is a life-saving for the phones and everything. But I'm telling you, we need to get a fair share. And I don't know how professionally we can investigate, we can investigate this without having to spend a fortune, okay? But honestly, I believe this since we incorporated, and I was for incorporation. And I appreciate that. Regarding the city, please, I'm going to ask you again. We have serious problems in all Palm Coast. We have serious problems in Florida Park Drive. It cost $163,000 spent by engineering and traffic studying and design of those two beautiful islands that will be slowing down the traffic, preventing these big rigs to go to negotiate around the islands. And will enhance the beauty and value of our, of our area of Florida Park Drive from which I moved over 20 years ago for the same reasons. And now everybody can move out of here, out of there. I have my friends and neighbors that live there. Please reconsider, you had to spend $163,000 in those traffic studies and design for those islands. And now you put it down in the garbage because it costs $392,000. When you spend 1.6 million on unneeded repaving of the Seminole Woods Parkway. This is true, please. I have friends that live and people that is running for office in Seminole Woods Parkway. And they are saying there was no need to repave the Seminole Parkway for 1.6 million dollars. Do something about it. Maybe some of our departmental heads are wrong in some of the way they spend our monies, but you need to check in that. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other members of the public that want to address City Council, I'll close public comment and come to the dais. Just a, just a note, there was a, there were comments made this morning over at the county, at the GSB to memorialize Councilman Charlie Erickson. Charlie Erickson was a dear personal friend, and I think everyone here knows. His years and years of dedicated service were honored this morning. Unfortunately, we were tied to our public meeting here, but I'm sure that he would understand that we also are trying to deliver. And we can only use him as a measure if we could live up to his bar of expectation in terms of dedication and public service, we would all be better off for it. So I just wanna make everybody aware that that did occur this morning. So with that, I would ask City Council members, are there any final comments for today?
I just want to thank our first responders, fire, police in advance, all of our staff that's going to be at our EOC in advance, everybody for what you are about to go through over the next few days. Thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager and Mayor. I know you'll likely be at the EOC. Please, everybody be safe. And City Manager, if you wouldn't mind, I know that there's an alert system that people can sign up for. Would you mind just talking about that briefly?
Sure, I believe you're alluding to the Alert Flagler system, yes. So to echo Chief Barry Hill, if you go to Flagler County's Emergency Management Program, and you can actually sign up for that, I've done it years ago. It's a great opportunity to just get direct correspondence from our emergency management leaders.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And then the last thing, I guess, just based on some comments from the dais and what seems to be some consensus as well as from our public, I don't know if the best mechanism would be a workshop or maybe a roundtable with the county to kind of look at the numbers that we have been paying the county versus what their full expenses are, the contracts, the, the inter-local agreements that we have. So I don't know, City Manager, if the best mechanism would be a workshop or maybe just a roundtable with a representative from the county. I, I'm open to suggestions, but I do think we need to shed some light on this overall picture between us and the county.
Yeah, we can look into what would be most suitable from a collaboration standpoint. Definitely open to that. We consistently collaborate with our county partners. And I know we're in early discussions of even bringing an element of economic development and having that collaboration as somewhat of a roundtable as well.
Yeah, I think that would be wise. I mean, especially since we do have this multi-municipality commission with Flagler Beach right now. You know, obviously, we're so, well, we're all very closely related and we all work, I think, pretty well together. But we need to get some knowledge, I think, behind the finances, behind all of it as well.
Councilwoman Hyder?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city staff for all that they're going to be dealing with over the next few days. And thank you for all that you do for our community. And I'd just like to make one lighthearted comment regarding our small businesses in the area. I visited several, several small businesses this weekend, and I think I got the lucky pin this morning because it reads, "Be local, buy local." So there was one business that I visited in particular, and it's a new business here in Palm Coast. It's called Serendipity Marketplace. And this young lady has created a great idea for small businesses where she has about 50 small businesses under one roof. And it really is great for all of these small businesses to be there and be able to thrive. I thought it was a great idea, and I think everyone should visit. It's located at Commercial Drive, 5 Commercial Drive here in Palm Coast, right off of Utility. They have great merchandise, very unique. So support our small businesses. And another small business also mentioned to me about the Community Kitchen, something that has been discussed in the past here, I think, in City Council. And they would like to see that happen because there are a lot of small cottage, cottage home businesses where people have to cook. So they thought that would be a great idea if we reconsidered bringing back the idea of the Community Kitchen. And thank you so much and be safe. of the Community Kitchen, and thank you so much and be safe.
Thank you. Councilman?
Just a reminder to be safe and everything, and of course echoing all the appreciation for all the staff and our council members' time up here.
Very good. Thank you. With that, city manager, any final comments for today? Any announcements or?
Yeah, I'll just close with what obviously city council has extended to our staff, a mass amount of appreciation. I know we encourage our residents to prepare as a storm comes close, but we're on a 365 timeline. We prepare around the calendar year, it's not just during storm season. And I would just leave you with making sure that when a resident approaches you or tries to ask what's going on with the storm, just direct them to our city website and Flagler County Emergency Management. We are putting out news releases constantly. The most recent is that our parks are going to close tonight at 6:00 PM on those facilities. So just as I update you, just make sure you direct our citizens to the right information, and that would be our city webpage and Flagler County Emergency Management.
Thank you. And Commander, you're not, you will be a regular part of our agenda going forward. Are there any announcements coming forward from the sheriff for today? Very good. Okay. With that, I would ask for a motion, I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, we are adjourned. Thank you all.